I'd like to call to order the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Minutes meeting today, Tuesday, November 1st, 2020. No, this isn't right. January 31st, 2023. I was reading the minutes. Sorry. So can we have a roll call, please? I'll start. Joan, Chair.
Eric Rodriguez, Commissioner Longmont.
Marshall Martin, Commissioner, Sarah already public safety.
Harold Dominguez, interim executive director.
Valerie Dodd, supervising.
Molly O'Donnell, housing director.
Lisa Gannon, our regional manager.
Tracy DeFrancesco, finance manager.
Shavak Jay, Commissioner.
Susie Zalba Ferring, Commissioner.
You can hear our role, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, I don't. Yeah, that's all right.
Do you want to be attorney? Tim Wallace is.
No, Valerie Dodd. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, here. Valerie Dodd, next slide. Aye.
Thank you. We are at gender revisions and submissions of documents. I have a couple of motions that need to be made. I would like to motion to, I would like to move to suspend by reference Council Ruled Procedure 25.2.8.2 to allow for Commissioner Yarborough to participate remotely in the Zinnia.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. I move to allow electronic participation by Commissioner Yarborough through January 31st, 2023. We're gonna have to change that. Are you gonna be back next Tuesday for the meeting? Okay.
Yeah, I'll be back Tuesday.
All right. Through January 31st, 2023, due to a personal matter that requires her to be out of state and unable to participate in person.
Second.
So it's been moved in second here. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Yeah, passes unanimously. Um, we need to approve the November 1st, 2022 minutes.
I'll have approval on the November 1st, 2022 minutes.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner, should I ask Ms. Rodriguez? Seconded by Commissioner Haddad Berry. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We are now at the public invited to be heard. We have three minutes. Is anybody in the public that would like to participate? Nobody else? So seeing no one, I'll close the public invited to be heard. We are now at Boulder and New Business, Resolution 2023-01, approved adoption of the 2023 utility allowance schedule. So that is, it requires that PHAs conduct the utility allowance, reasonable utility allowance renew every year. If the utilities don't go up at least 10%, then we don't have to do a full survey. We decided that this year, then we would do a full survey, and that's because of the utilities rates. So a survey was done in conjunction with Boulder County Housing and Heed Services. And we did that as a partner to make sure that Boulder County Housing Authority and Boulder County, Boulder Housing Partners all use the same utility allowance, since all of our clients are moving now. So we've got the utility survey back, and it's gone up. Gas has gone up, electricity has gone down, and garbage has gone up. So it's probably gonna work out that the utility allowance that we had is a little bit higher than it was last year. But all in all, it hasn't increased that much. Well, gas has. Gas has doubled from last year. So we just need board approval to adopt the utility allowance for 2023.
Can I ask what the survey should? Oh, just an overall.
Um, you know, they, what they did is they surveyed the city of Longmont on utilities and then all of the services Excel in Boulder. And what they found as a reasonable and impacted or this form, and that's what they have found as far as being a reasonable cost per, and what they do is they have to look at the types of building security, all that family. And then if somebody is on oxygen, then we give an allowance for medical, extra medical, like an oxygen concentrator. So what they look at is just what the rates were versus what the rates are now. And I have to, who does? I haven't, this was done by Boulder County Housing and Heed Services, and then we joined in with them.
Yeah, they saw the rates. I was just curious as to how they compiled it. So thank you.
Can, can I send? Do you want the survey? Are you going to submit the survey?
Is it on line?
I can put it on line.
It is a clip, but it's pretty big.
It is.
No, I'm fine. I trust you.
So in terms of the who, so obviously Excel, Longmont's different, we're all municipal, but you have Excel, you have United Power, you have various trash services that are playing. That's because of the HCB vouchers. And so we have people, BCPH vouchers that live in Longmont, people with PHP vouchers that live in Longmont. And so that's why it makes sense for all of us to do, I think, a sound there. I guess.
So then they also look at propane and bottled gas. We don't run into that very often, but they look at that. There's a, there's a rating information gathering. They look at western disposable city of Longmont, trash collection. And they basically look at all of this and then just take an average usage for bedroom size. Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-01? Second. So Resolution 2023-01 is moved by Commissioner Haddad Berry, duly seconded by Commissioners McCoy and Martin. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Next up is Resolution 2023-02, approving property tax exemption partnership.
Samantha DeMe, Molly O'Donnell, housing director. So the Zinnia project is moving right along. This is the permanent supportive housing. We always remind them because the name has changed a couple of times, next to suites. So we are still shooting for, well, still, we are currently shooting for a May financial closing on the tax credits financing. And in preparation for that, there's a lot of moving pieces going on right now. We recently processed the land transfer so that they have that in hand and continue funding the rest of their, of their work. And before you tonight is the property tax exemption partnership that we would request your approval on. This is so that they can qualify for that property tax exemption by having the LHA as a special limited partner. And the calculation worksheet was attached to your board packet that shows what the value of the property tax is to them, why this is such an attractive deal to developers. Basically, it's the annual, I'm sorry, the 15-year compliance period, so that period where the tax credits really have cover and hook onto that property. The value of the property tax is 989,000. So as a, we take a percentage of that as a fee based on the benefit to the community that the project is providing. And because this project is permanent supportive housing and is gonna serve 100% people with incomes less than 30% of AMI, it qualifies under the lowest fee. And it also qualifies, we don't really have an exact qualification language in our policy, but because it's a partner project with LHA and because of those extraordinary benefits, it, we recommend, staff recommends, that the $5,000 application fee be waived. So therefore, the total fee for the developer would be 49,497,074 cents. So that would be income to the LHA at closing, and then that tax benefit long term is what they would get in return. So we recommend approval of this, but I would welcome any questions. How this works, do you wish to tell me more questions?
It's just too important to continue forward with this to slow down. Again, I mean, so why is the property tax exemption important for affordable housing? It really is because if you were to layer in annual property tax to the operating costs associated with these units, it doesn't make, it won't make financially for it. And so that's why it's special, not permanent supportive, you see it, you see it up to 60% AMI in some communities if they pay a much larger fee based on that. And so you're really looking at it from a immediate basis.
We are considering bringing back, there we go. About 20 minutes? Yeah. I'll probably come and grab one of those after this item. So we are considering some updates to this policy. You all voted to approve it back in, back in February of last year, but we've learned a whole lot in a year, and we're considering some tweaks. That this, this one that you're considering tonight is basically going on the old policy, but then anything coming forward after that, we're gonna present those new policy terms to you for consideration.
I'll have your Resolution 2023-02.
Second. So this resolution's been moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by Commissioner, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Moving right along, we have Resolution 2023-03, approval of intergovernmental agreement with city of Longmont through 2023 services.
So this is the annual IGA that we are putting forth for the fiscal year 2023, so going back from January 1st to December 31st. The, most of it is the same from last year. The only real difference is, well, only, we have several key differences. We're adding on public safety, health, and property management support services out of the public safety department with Sarah's help, which I think we're gonna have her chat a little bit more about that. And then we're adding the legal services since the city attorney's office is now our general counsel and helping us with coordinating our special counsel needs, too. Those are the key differences. And then we just updated the development work to be most accurate, the latest status in each of those.
You all recall, as city council and the budget conversations, we put funding in from the general fund and from the housing authority, a lot of really low expenses, in-house counsel, based on the volume of work. And so Tim is, is going to be the in-house counsel on this. And so all the work in terms of housing community investment work, affordable housing, everything committed under affordable housing will work with Tim in addition to the housing authorities. And we still will probably have to contract some evictions out initially until Tim gets his feet under and hopefully he still is going out. But fully expect that a lot of year, be able to handle most of it. And then Sarah, talk a little bit about Sarah's. As you all know, we have been utilizing Sarah's services for quite some time, actually probably from the beginning when we took over the housing authority based on the number of issues we were having in properties. And what we found is that it's incredibly important partnership with public safety. They've been there throughout this. Started really feeling that we were impacting public safety because I think Sarah was spending, certainly, a lot of her time on our work. And so we funded it at a level two or level one officer?
Level one.
Level one, okay, level one officer.
We actually did it based off of her salary at 50%.
But it's equivalent to entry level officer, so that that money's gonna be transferred with the police department, so they can utilize it to augment their services as she's working with us. And Zach has reviewed in terms of some of his structuring issues and how our grandkids' dollars could be used, but Sarah will still work for Zach, but spend a lot of time with me and the LHA team. And she'll talk a little bit about what she does, and it's really liaisoning toward lead on the health and safety functions. We've added liaisoning with the fire department as we're trying to do educational sessions at properties, also bridging the gap for support services that are beyond kind of what we have access to, what they have access to via public safety for the residents. And, and we're probably gonna keep adding stuff. And she's now taking over some of the actively involved enough work that we're doing, and I'll talk to you about that.
Good. I'll be here after you. So even though you're augmenting it financially, is Zach losing a body?
No, they have the ability to have an entry level officer with the money we put in. We didn't get all of, again, we had the fully loaded cost, we weren't able to get it this year, but he's working through that, but he's also working through operational changes that he's looking at, where they may choose to use the dollars in a different way, but it's still augmenting the operations of the police department.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. So do we have any other comments or discussions? Seeing no comment on the motion for Resolution 2023-03?
Resolution 2023-03.
So that has been moved by Commissioner Haddad Berry and seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. All those opposed? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. So we have to take the 2022 debt, I don't, I don't know who would not.
So we gave you a summarized what it looks per property. What that accounts to is we wrote off about 19 individuals that were below $3, most of them in between actually about $1 and $2. There were four that were between $200 to $500, three that were below $1,000, and then one that was below $5,000. The larger one was done because they actually found after the individual moved out, soccer obituary actually in the paper documented on the property, so there's no reason to settle to collections, confirmed it with Sarah. And so that's, that was the biggest. Harold has, in our debt, bad debt policy, we're not gonna give $5,000 per tenant over there. Anything above that would come to you guys for approval. But that's where we're trying to stand at. We're kind of looking at a standard of about writing off anything that's under $1,000. And if it's over, we try to attach to collections and see where that goes.
And the, well, and the collections process is getting more complicated because unless there's a court ordered judgment, collections can't go after something. What is it, do they?
Well, they can't, can't go to a collection agency. So we actually thought, like, you know, we weren't doing our due diligence to get these to the collection agencies so that not only are we aware when they come back to us to rent again and we don't have it in our system anymore, that it's recorded somewhere. But according to the collection agencies laws, it just, they don't take anything, they won't take fees. So if it's literally, which is what our balance is, is all fees, back to the, to the individual, they won't put it unless you do a judgment and you follow through on that judgment. So that's where we'll probably see maybe some of the meth numbers having to go through judgment, because those are the kinds of.
Yeah, and part of, it's interesting, it's, I'm hearing from other property owners that rent property, it is becoming a bit of a challenge for folks because people are literally not paying rent and then they're improving fees, but then they're paying rent. And so they're ending up with thousands and thousands of dollars of fees, but there's no mechanism to get it. And so it's, it's something that I think housing authorities and private landlords are facing right now with this, which is also connected to why when we, when we deal with issues, it's why you have to go through the formal eviction process and actually get the eviction judgments, because only until you do that can you collect it. So we've had some, whatever eviction is, I think, our highest meth number, we got the judgment, and they said that anything that was associated with that, we could recover. And so that would be one thing to go into this process.
Do you need, sorry, us to ask if do you need official sentence in your report?
That'd be great. Be kind of.
So can I have a motion to approve the annual report for the 2022 debt? Right off. So I'm, second. So that's moved by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Haddad Berry. Before we go, a new report. When did that change, that the fee versus the?
You know, when I call the collection agency, that's just what they, they said, if it's rent, because we actually have rent due, then they can actually surrender that, and the collection agency will take that, but if it's be driven, they'll, they'll.
Probably more business practices than legislated.
Yeah, or, I don't know.
We think there may be some legislative touch on this one too, because, but we stepped into it because we need to collect money and we felt that we're gonna change, they just said we can't take it. We've got some work to do to figure that out.
I mean, they can take it, but they, it can't really go to litigation. So, so they'll take it, so anything over $1,000, they'll take, and they'll try to collect for us. But they also do kind of a determination on whether it goes to litigation, can this person pay? And they won't take it to litigation unless they can determine that this person can pay, which we're in a low income housing sector, so you know, a lot of that's probably never been voted litigation. Litigation, they'll pay the upfront cost, but then they get paid back first before we would see any of that, that money come back. So it's.
All right. So the movement sent to the board, approve the annual report. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Did you have a question? I'm sorry. Commissioner Yarborough.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, so did I hear right that there isn't a system that can see the information of the charges or collections, at least within the county, where we can recognize when a tenant hasn't have charges within our LHA or within another housing facility, you know, another housing area? Although I know that if we don't, if we're not able to, you know, get charges against them, both important, that if we had a system that sees, at least within Boulder County with all the apartments and with the Boulder Housing Authority, even if it was just between Boulder Housing Authority and us, that would be great so that we can know who owns what in those, you know, because we know how some tenants can be. Before we get ready to charge them, they're hopping into another unit in a different city, and so once they get approved over there, we haven't even pressed charges against them yet. We don't even know they moved out yet. So here they are in a whole nother apartment in another city. So those are some of the challenges, I know how that happens, but is there any way or is there a system that can see that information, especially regarding to charges within the housing building?
So there is not anything out there. I know Sarah and I talked to some attorneys about the legalities of doing this. This is where it basically comes down to the landlord's due diligence of doing the landlord check prior to that person moving in and checking with the previous landlord or current landlord to see, open and pending.
So it certainly doesn't end up on a background check yet, under the credit agencies.
Well, then that gets into some of the fair housing laws in terms of what you can and you can't consider. So even if you had the system, you would have to figure out how that would fall into it. And part of the challenge, what we've, what we've been saying, so when you have an issue that warrants eviction, is why you also go through the eviction process, because you don't want to have, well, she's met, because that's probably the worst thing for what we call three-day notice. You go through the process because that then becomes available for other landlords to see. I think where you run into issues is when people don't go through the eviction process, and that's to your point, where now all of a sudden, every, you can find, I think Sarah can talk to this, that multiple properties have had the same issue with the same person because no one's ever gone through the eviction process and still under fair housing, there's nothing that you can really use, and that's why we're pretty focused on that piece. But we've been trying, we've asked Lisa to talk to, during the Boulder Apartment Association, and try to talk to them about those types of issues, because what's happening is we're just all experiencing the same issues with a lot of the same people.
You know, fortunate part is that the eviction process is expensive because they have to go to court and all the filing and record keeping, and I mean, it's necessary, but it is still very expensive on LHA.
Yeah.
Well, and also now because of the mediation system that the courts have put in place, we're seeing less evictions being actually founded. So that's another piece to this. We could go to eviction court and it not end up as an eviction. So that's another, another topic, but that's happening too.
Are there any comments? I just thought of this, so it didn't miss me. But we, we, the city often work to help our residents avoid eviction for which we're seeing. Are we creating a conflict with ourselves there by doing so?
So we have to be really careful in terms of the lines when we're sitting at who's doing what. What I can tell you is from our perspective, eviction is absolutely the last thing that we want to do. And so we had, we had one recently where the issue was not in a range of significance, not like the most significant issues that you all have heard about. But the situation is, so we go in, we talk, can't continue doing this, we need to stop because it's impacting the other residents. We back up, we watch, we do it again, then we go with another warning, but it's an official warning in its own way. It says, you were warned. Then on that one, we went in with a 10-day notice to, to stop the behavior, and then it continued. And then we went in with, we're going to eviction. Now, what we're finding is that a lot of times, when, when people hit that point, it is not uncommon that they have not communicated to their caregivers or other people until they get to eviction. And a lot of the less severe issues that we find is that sons, daughters, relatives, whatever, will jump in and try to help manage, and then we're still willing, even at that point, to do a mediated agreement that says, here's what you need to do, and if you keep doing this, then we reserve our right to take you back in through the eviction process. So we have like four or five steps that we go through, so by the time we're getting that point, we've done almost everything that we can, and in some cases, that's what Sarah and Lisa are talking about the other services and other providers that we can get in, if they're associated with MHP, we're talking with NHP, and other groups to go in. So it is a link. So it is a lengthy process that we're going through to get to this point. And normally by the time, I don't think we've had one where we've lost communication. And the reason, or had had it not awarded, I think the reason is, is because we're going through all these processes on the front end to to avoid getting to eviction.
That is, that is completely right. And there's a lot of things we will ask Susan Spalding and her group of mediators to step in way before or even to that eviction to try to work out and problem solve together to help keep those residents housed.
And to add to that, I think Susan does a really good job of removing herself as the direct mediator for certain, um, residents, specifically LHA, that's a conflict.
So I hope that gave you everything.
Yeah. Great. All right, let's go down this, um, oh, I didn't click through here because I called them. I'm so glad you're here. Thank you. So we're in the community management decision and issue escalation matrix. After we do the twenty twenty two.
So I'm going to kick this off for Molly. So Molly's going to do this. The one thing, as you look at the goal of the issue, um, that I would ask you all to think about is, so you've heard part of what we've talked about in terms of how we move through the evictions within the process. Um, that's only a piece of the broader tenant issues that we're dealing with. Um, and then on top of that, when you live in the financial world and you know what's going on, um, it seems like we're in constant audits and inspections either from governmental agencies or the musters. Um, and then you'll hear the talk a little bit later in the executive direction reports about this, how we deal with snow. Uh, and and so when you look at the goal document and and, you know, what I would say is, when you look at the staff, because this is pretty much it, um, we're trying to do that and trying and for daily operations. So I just say if you can keep that in perspective because, you know, for a while, we lost Lisa almost every Friday when she was in Florida. And, um, and so that's just kind of, that's what we're working through. And the goals are important to that because as we talk about development, development's also about revenue and revenue allows you to hire staff. Uh, and so Molly, do you want?
So you have a pretty comprehensive document in your packet. Um, it does list out all the goals that were adopted also last, I think it was actually last March. Um, so we just thought it would be good, maybe once a year or however often requested, but at least preemptively to go over kind of what we accomplished in 2022 relative to those goals and specifically the action items. Um, and then what we have targeted for 2023 focus areas. So I'm not going to go through everything. It's a lot, um, but I might just go over kind of some of the key accomplishments in each goal area. Um, so the first one, ensuring that LHA residents and properties are safe and welcoming, using healthy and inclusive communication processes. This is really a process, um, piece on staff side. And so we've made sure that resident quality of life is a standing agenda item of the advisory board and make sure we're, um, doing quality of life add-ons at the properties as much as possible. We were able to increase budgets for that this for 2023. Um, we are hitting this where we came, but you can see that there's still work to be done here.
Well, and thank you all and your lowest counsel for funding the transit. Um, and that was a big part of quality of life that we didn't have the funding for. And then the housing authority, the council, you all used your contingency for that and, um, really successful program. We're using it and, um, we're getting good reports, maybe augmenting a little bit this year based on our wording.
The second goal was really around that, um, using the housing needs assessment that the city is is doing, um, and trying to have that help guide our development at LHA. So we did have accomplishments there. It was slower than anticipated because of procurement struggles with how many communities out there are trying to do the exact same thing right now and only so many firms. But, um, that did kick off where they're in the group policy research is the firm that we contracted with and they're in the data gathering session or section of the project and they'll be doing engagement here soon. And then we will have some draft numbers to look at later in the spring and then hope to finalize that report in May. So that we can use in our development efforts to make sure we're hitting the right gaps in the community.
Will that be available to us in May?
Oh, sorry. We'll do a presentation to prevent that. Uh, number three, increase access to rental assistance. This is really around our voucher program. Um, so the main goal was we were looking for opportunities to expand our voucher program, um, tap into new resources, expand our authority as much as we can. We continually researched those notices of funding availability to NOFAS and we came and presented to you once about just a sampling of of what we had been looking at and why in those cases it didn't work for LHA, but we're still on the lookout constantly. Um, and we are doing a lot of work around the voucher program regarding compliance, make sure everything's up to speed, all of our people are being treated equitably, um, got our administrative plan updated in 2022, which was many years out of date. Um, and that will really guide a lot of our policies like what we're doing.
One of the things we may bring you on this, and it will bring it to you in two forms, one is your role as commissioners, but also your role as city council, is a blanket resolution that gives me the ability to apply for grants, um, because sometimes you run into certain grants that need approval. And by the time you look at time limits, it's just messy. And so we may, for affordable and attainable housing, both as the affordable for the commissioners, affordable and attainable as the council asks for a resolution, kids do that for already, just like. Yeah, you want to know that.
Um, there's still a lot of work that we'd like to do in 2023 to continue to expand that program. We really do feel like it's at that stabilized point and we're ready to grow. And we've been talking to the, our partners at PHP and BCG to let us to really try and coordinate and figure out, um, just what works best. Um, number four is development. So this is the the heftiest one, especially for 2022. There's so much development activity going on because it's really tied to the time constraints with the ARPA funding that's attached to most of these projects. So, um, there's a lot of activity that's happened and will continue to happen for the next couple of years while we, um, make sure that funding gets utilized. So you will see, this is probably our biggest focus area in terms of the sheer volume of stuff that has has been happening. Um, so I will just not go through every project, but let me ask anything specific if you want or we'll solve.
Question about those ARPA funds based upon what I've heard you make. How is this helping?
Yeah, so Sandy's going to attend discussions with me, I think. Um, what folks are hearing is that, um, as you look at the debt ceiling question, there may be some conversations about ARPA funds that aren't extended as being a negotiating tool, um, and and using that to give capacity to the debt ceiling issue. Um, so we're sending them information because the challenge is for communities like Long Rock, you know, we put eight million dollars of the eleven point nine that we had in ARPA all to to housing. And we plan to augment that with three million dollars of our affordable housing for the projects we're talking about. The challenge with that is it takes time to to get through these processes. So we're communicating that earmark and that allocation and the fact that we're doing it. We're also evaluating, um, how we we spend the money, you know, more quickly in in certain projects, but there are a lot of landlines that you get into in terms of when you buy the land and when you convey it. Uh, the ceiling for projects, the one over, um, we spend a lot of, people spend like two or three weeks trying to figure out because on that project, but prior to the us becoming involved with the housing authority many, many years ago, um, LHDC purchased that land adjacent to the lodge in Hearthstone, but they have a loan from the Affordable Housing. And so we're having to figure out how do we thread the needle, um, with the ARPA funds, making up the loan and not creating issues in terms of the development of the project because if you miss one step in there, you can bog the project down completely. And and so we're communicating all these issues. And that one, we actually got a good estimate, I think, that's a recently, um, by.
Go now.
Go now. And so some of those dollars are going to be moving up.
Oh, good.
But yeah, you don't want to jeopardize the actual development of it by just misstepping. And to give you a sense, the missteps, why development is so complicated, is the missteps start at the beginning and go up to the day of closing. If you literally file a document incorrectly, it messes up the workflow. And so what we learned is even in terms of cities process, our process, we just have to, and file it and they record it. Yeah, that's a mess. And so you look, the title capital is figure out all the reporting and how to do it. So even now, things we would normally record as the city, we're not good at that. We're letting the title happen. Tell us what to do.
So there's a couple more. Would you like to keep going or did you? Okay. So goal number five is preservation. So this is really about our resuscitation process, uh, for a couple of our projects that are on the horizon. So Village Place is going in full force. Um, that is on track to close at the end of this year. We're, we have an architect, we're selecting a construction contractor right now. It's moving quickly. Um, and then the other two that we've had on here, we've learned some things in the last year. Chappa is not really keen on resyndicating right at that fifteen year, um, compliance period end mark unless you have a pretty extraordinary circumstance. So we're making that case for Village Place because it didn't have a full rehab, the last go around. Um, but for Aspen Meadows and Hearthstone and Lodge, with with this man that pushing up the schedule a bit, if we can't, um, get through Chappa as fast as we were planning, so.
The city has slash will have, um, building efficiency goals that are really important to the overall, um, city sustainability strategy. Are those going to become a part of justification for a resuscitation of these buildings because they're probably not tight enough to meet the new objectives?
I think what what Chappa's really saying in resuscitation is, so the model was for years and years and years, every fifteen years, people would come and resuscitate. And what that what that ultimately did is, um, reduce the amount of new projects that they can do because they have a limited pool of funds in terms of that world. And so why they're saying we don't want to resuscitate on the earmark is I think they're managing their financial portfolio. And and the only reason we think we can get Village Place in is because when the housing authority purchased it from a private developer, they used the tax credits to purchase the property, but they didn't make any improvements to the property or not.
They just did, yeah, critical systems, nothing aesthetic.
Not, and so the property as it sits today looks like it did when it was constructed originally. So the argument we're making to them is this property is is due for capital improvements in this. Um, I'm not sure how much attention they'll pay to to the aspect of some Village Place, but what I can tell you on new construction is that's a component of the tax credit process and sustainability issues. And so we are looking at it on the new construction.
So on Village Place, we are required to be an enterprise reading communities, building standards, which all, um, tax credit properties do. And then we, there's solar panels up there that are a part of the water system, the water heat system. We are working with LPC to assess whether those can be, uh, re- basically used again. They're not in use at the moment. And we're working with LPC just to look for other funding opportunities or anything to do more upgrades than the the standards set by the enterprise reading communities. So there will be some, we're working with LPC.
Yeah, I'm I'm much more concerned about about consumption of fuels and 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 the comfort levels of building and things like that than I, and I mean, of of course it has to be justifiable through the processes, but, um, I hope that will be, I guess what I'm saying is that I hope that we will start with a full complement of asks, um, based on our local sustainability goals.
That is the plan. Uh, we're, our our asks right now offer everything, including sustainability items and the upgrades that we want to do. We're at the, we're at the full request level right now and we're going to have to work our way down as we determine the budget and the pricing. Um, but we, that is fully on the list at this time to do whatever we can manage.
So Carol, does that include, or Molly, does that include, um, your desire, I guess, to make, um, the new Hover LHA development, um, sustainable, renewable, uh, as as a pro- as a pilot project almost to see what you can put in?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. New construction's a little bit easier. And when you come in and, so you go in and you go, here's how much money we want. Now, they have limits already set up. So there's like a hard limit where it's not an unlimited pool of funds that you can get because when you're working through this, you're looking at, Molly, help me on this, you're looking at right structures, everything else to see what the cash flow is going to be. So that's one of the things going with Village Place is having to look at it because of the story of what they've done and the number of people we have that aren't at the right income levels. And so you have cash flow limitations that really get into the debt. And so where's the limit that you can ask for over at the chapter?
Um, per per unit cost limit? We're, for Village Place, we're shooting for ninety thousand per unit, which is pretty high. I don't know what the exact top limit is, but there's the many, how project.
Yeah. And so you get into those conversations with them in terms of what is, what is it per unit? Um, we are having conversations on the Hover property. I had a few today. Um, and we have a city manager meeting with John Potter and Tower and how they can come in and help with some of these issues because, uh, the scale's a little bit larger on those units. And so we're looking at different mechanisms to do it.
Moving on, number six, uh, this is partnership with service providers. And this is where, uh, we really have a good amount of work to to start focusing on in 2023. Uh, we did, um, work with VIA, we got their VIA service set up. Uh, we really have set a really good relationship, tone for relationship with the residents at Coffee and Conversations and coming up with ideas together for what services that they would like added, um, and how to, uh, have accommodate them budget wise. Um, we are working with Next Light on bulk agreements for low income residents. Valerie's here and that's on my list to talk to you again about again here soon. Um, and really, but we do have more want to do. Um, but it's more about building those partnerships. It takes some time. Number seven. Okay, thank you.
What's a carryout program then?
I'm sorry, which number was that? I just, oh, that's.
Number five, under, number six.
Cultivate. So this was something that Karen Romy, that was one of her special projects, she wanted to get started. We haven't gotten started with this yet, but is carryout services cultivate related to, um, food distribution?
I believe that's the grocery pickup system where they go through the shopping for the residents. It's kind of like cover pickup or something like that. But they, geared towards seniors, they place it through their app. They go pick up it and then carry out the groceries to them.
And we're doing the grocery trips with VIA for now as well. So this is more for those who can't get out, have limited mobility, need stuff outside of our trips. Number seven, partnerships for assisted living units. This is one that we really did start with pretty in full force in 2022, just to figure out what direction we should even look towards. And we did a lot, we had a lot of great progress on doing that and figuring out what does a Medicaid structure look like? What does the service provision look like compared to like managing a property? Who does what and how does it fit together? And on the financing side, we happened to meet with a developer who's done this before in Illinois quite a bit, and they've worked with NDC. And NDC has a lot of experience doing assisted living. So we've done a lot of research on this one. Really, from a capacity standpoint, this is a big project. Even if we don't necessarily get in on the service side, even if we're just investing in the project in exchange for a preference list on their acceptance for our residents, that's what we hope to trade off for investment. But even with that, it is just a big, it's a big one. So for staff capacity reasons, we have Xenia, Hover, Village Place, Christmas Two going right now. So it's just, we've gotten at least our concept out there and then we're going to let things settle.
Well, and we're working on with the government, not part of the OJ, but we did move the funds that's in Holly's report where we're not going to report on the ability to create a for sale or obtainable product. That shifted out of the LHA goals over to the city because we do rental, the city does for sale. It's the same people with it stood at that. So when you look at those six projects maxed out. But one thing I will tell you on affordable assisted living is I think what's pretty clear is we don't need a service provider. If anything, we may talk about management of the facilities, but that is so specialized that you need a partner that understands how to run it and operate it. And I think once we get a little further down on these other projects, they're willing to engage with us when we have capacity.
Number eight, this is establish partnerships for early childhood education programs. So you'll see not a lot of progress on this in 2022, but what we've done just even since the beginning of 2023 and the last month is we've really dove in headfirst on early childhood and that possibility at Hover that we're going to talk about later tonight. So things are starting to move already with that. But there's still more to be done, including trying to serve our existing residents, not just the new development itself. And then finally, homeownership pathways and opportunities. We really have not delved into this fully. But if we have an opportunity with for sale, affordable housing for the city coming up, we can definitely find ways to create a link to try and help those that are ready to go.
Well, I understand slightly difficult the concept of that the city is not going to carry things for a senior. It's going to be some sort of developer.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think the challenge in the for sale is, so remember, we're getting affordable individuals who call it affordable. It's hard to get something going now because there's not affordable stock in the community for sale. I think as we talk about what we're trying to do on the city side and you see opportunities to create for sale units, there will be a trigger point where we will want to start communicating with our voucher holders. And right now, only Aspen Meadows and Maplewood because it's really our family housing that we have. And try to figure out how do we get people in programs that exist to get them ready to buy ours?
But wouldn't Riley equal housing if?
It can be a direct pipeline.
It's not a direct pipeline. You're just getting them ready and qualified. Directly applying to Riley of.
Yes. So I'm just curious about that.
Does it need to be located for this as well?
I don't think we. I think the big thing that really what you see in this is just the volume of work until we even, like everyone's lunch right now. And I think I said before, we finished Christmas in what, nine months? Twelve's probably average, just getting through the finances. Xenia appears to move faster, but we were working on it for years ahead of this. And so the financing piece of this, at its quickest is four months. I really think probably realistically sixty months. For all of the steps that you have to go through. And then in a lot of cases, we've been really lucky in that our first run in tax credits, we found the tax credits. It's not uncommon in the tax credit world to fail your first run. And so if you fail on your first event or then, you're talking twenty-four months to get through all of those pieces. Oh, that's right, we failed the first time. So yeah, Xenia less than is twenty-four months.
So now we are at the Community Manager Decision and Issue Festival, you're making this.
So I'll lead this one off. So I know Commissioner Wangers was asking about this. It's a little bit different here because what we had to do was really go in and look at the policies that were in place for the Housing Authority. And then what we realized is the policies were not updated and it weren't made. We were seeing issues all over. Because of the world that we're in with the audits and with HUD, we have to start with the policies. And so they have, Tracy and the team have been working diligently and they got our operating policies, the draft form ready, which is, then we took the draft form of the operating policies and put it into this matrix where you all to see in terms of who does what, what are the triggers and how things get escalated.
This is really.
So this is, the hope is for community managers and for maintenance technicians as well to have this kind of as a quick reference guide, but have the full manual to tie to, to pull up all the details on all of these and use on an often basis.
And then the other piece that we struggled with is so when we took over, there was nothing in a white paper form, a big word and exactly a summary of what to do. And so we're going to try to then add components there on things that we're running into, documenting them and putting them in place where you have the policies, but sometimes it's hard to make sense of what. And really having, this is your high-level guideline on some things, a white paper below it and then the policies as a backup. Because we're finding that there's just nuances that the policy lets us deal with it, but we're learning through how to get a little bit, it's the how and not the capture. That's not front, center, forth, right, that's in the wrong way. It's not front, center, forth.
Or just make it not.
It's basically an operational.
Project-based voucher request proposal is information on that. That is unique. So it allows the PHA to set aside twenty percent of their voucher allocation to project-based. So it's not, it's not extra funding. We just take our vouchers, our current vouchers and put them into a project. So they are, the client would have to move into the project in order to get assistance. And so right now, the LHA has project-based eighty of its hundred and three allowed vouchers. So the Suites has forty, Christmas One has ten, Aspen Meadows Neighborhood has twelve, Briarwood has three, and then Aspen Meadows, Fall River has fourteen. So that's eighty. So we have right now twenty-three that we can project base. And when you, when you start looking at project-based, you start looking at the approach that you take is to look at what is happening in the local market. If voucher clients are having problems finding a place because the rents are too high, you look at existing, you look at the PHA policy to see if we can, you know, project base up to twenty percent, and that's already going through. We also look at the types of households and preferences that are falling in help. Project-based vouchers and light tech, so usually take light tech properties because the light tech rents are usually typically higher than what a person at thirty percent of their income would be able to cover. So with that, we had talked about preserving existing for the housing. And so if we have the twenty-three and we're thinking that twenty of you are project-based, another twenty, you would have to go out for an RFP for project stimulus to find a site to project base the vouchers to. We can, we can do a couple of things. We can limit it to preserving existing housing and that's what we decided to do. So we have to be existing housing that we're trying to preserve as affordable. And we are limiting it, limiting it to elderly projects that are resyndicated through IDA. So for example, Village Place could apply for them. If they have a cash flow problem and they need the vouchers to get higher rents, then it could be a gap funding source. So that RFP is to us got ready. And we'll go out and the process is, is we'll get some, we'll have a review team that will review it and come back with a suggestion on what projects would be the best project based, the vouchers in. CHAFA has to do, conduct a subsidy layering review. Once that is done and the project is selected and approved, then it will come to the board for. And it's just an informational.
So we're, I'm going to tack on. We're operating within the admin plan, which allows us, sets the procedure for going ahead and doing a request for proposals to see what developments out there in the community.
What's the word you used? The, the something plan?
Administrative.
Administrative.
Yes. So we ran the administrative plan update through your board a couple of months ago, in November. And so it's all up to date. And it is typical for administrative plans to set out these procedures for putting out requests for proposals for, during the use of project-based vouchers. What's unique is usually Housing Authorities can put them out and if they aren't developing as robustly, then you want all of the competition from the community to see what else is out there. In this case, it's, we're in a very unique time where ARCA funding for, that is going to public agencies is supporting some of these projects that are on time limits and are really need, they're, all of them need gap funding to move forward and meet those time limits. So we're, we have a couple of instances where we are putting out for competitive proposals, knowing that some LHA properties are dependent on gap funding as well. And so we expect Village Place to, to put in for it. And this is the standard process. This is exactly what we've done for Fall River back in 2018. And putting specific evaluation factors in is also standard process for those. So why it's, why we think it's pretty critical for preservation is that a lot of the times, preservation projects don't have other options. They don't have the same funding opportunities that new builds have. Project-based vouchers are sometimes the only thing that is going to make them work. And so we thought that that was a reasonable evaluation criteria for this one. And really, it's, it's a project readiness issue too. Because to put out project-based vouchers, anybody else that comes in with a proposal that we would consider are, have to be ready to go, pretty much. So we will, we do have authority from HUD to issue forty-three project-based vouchers, which we're saying we have twenty-three and we're ready. We're just going to take it a piece at a time, do twenty now. But that does mean that once we figure out our budget authority, because really we're, we're not adding anything, it's just swapping one voucher program for another, that we'd be ready to put out those twenty-three and we can put out different criteria. We can put out, you know, family units to try and get maximize the number of people housed. We could, we can change the criteria to go along and put those out each time.
Yeah, that's, remember when I say we're constantly hardening something? The Housing Authority process, the most of this doesn't make sense to me. And so we're looking at alternatives to this because you have to put it out for RFP even if you're submitting your own project. And so we're, we're going to work with Tim and others to try to figure out how to improve this as we look to the future. Because I told Holly, it'd make more sense that if we had a plan, we don't care what we can do. It's that if we're developing, then they can go to those projects. And if you're not developing, then you can do this. But it's, it's a unique thing that we're having to work for. Because you will see an RFP of which we have submitted a project.
And if the, if the housing agreement was the owner, we wouldn't have to deal. So it depends on a lot of things.
And so really, this is also a point in time awkwardness. Because at some point later in time, if we grow our voucher program and have excess to put out, we do want to bring in other developments in the community as well. But because of the, the funding amounts out there right now and the number of volume of projects going for internal and, you know, maybe that, the procedure was written at a time where things really looked different, where they were really trying to bring in outside developers, so.
I want to kind of give you, project-based vouchers are very important to projects, especially at lower AMI runs. Because when you do your, your financial modeling, kind of what we were talking about before, what can we get, what we can do. When you're in those lower AMIs, they almost inherently come back with a gap. Project-based vouchers fills the gap because it's guaranteed income that's coming from the voucher over into the project. And you're not necessarily dependent on rental income coming into it. And so that's what fills the gap in the performer, which is when you see Xenia is whatever we have to put in. Because if we, if we didn't put project-based vouchers in that, well, it's a financial.
So I'm talking about learning curves. I'm having a little trouble with project-based voucher. I understand vouchers go to a person to find housing.
Housing choice vouchers do.
Yeah, okay. So when you have a project-based voucher, does that allow? So, so you're wanting to have Xenia, so you're going to be project-based vouchers to help build Xenia, basically?
Yeah, the easy way to think about it is housing choice vouchers are with people.
Yes.
Project-based vouchers are with units. So it always stays with the unit. And you just have to make sure you're bringing up people at, you know, the right AMI for that project.
Oh, I see.
Just take units, people, and just kind of.
Kind of like rent control, is that the sort of thing? Kind of like a rent control on that unit?
Uh.
Most of our units are controlled in some way anyway, li tech.
There's been forty. You cannot port a project.
Housing choice, you can port.
Yes.
Project-based vouchers.
So there's, there's benefits to both. Housing choices, the, the point is people can go out in the community and we can spread out low incomes, not concentrate. With project-based, you think, well, that's concentrating, but it actually is a way to get a unit and a household housed. Um, and it's very valuable to developers because of the guaranteed rents that come with it.
And after a year, a, a resident that's in a project base can request a voucher. Okay, if we have availability, they, yeah, they can get a voucher and move out.
And so your rent control question, when you, when you set your tax credit project. So for example, Chris Moon came in and said, there's gonna be X sixty percent AMI units, X fifty, X forty, X thirty. Those units then stay with that AMI and then we get a report on an annual basis that says, here's what we're allowed to charge in that AMI range. And so it doesn't hold it at what it is, but we're regulated by the state in terms of what that rental charge could be. Is that correct, Kendall?
Yes, and, and, but you also get to go up to the fair market rent on those units as well. So even though it has an AMI.
Hold on, on project-based vouchers? So, on project-based vouchers, you then go up to the fair market rent, which means we're getting via the voucher the fair market rent, but the person is still at that AMI.
Right.
Yeah, because you got down that route.
So, should I just escalate it? So when you wanna spread this project-based voucher system out to the, for example, if Ryan Bear is building more and you want him to have different, uh, lower AMI, people do, does he get to use project-based vouchers on some of his units? And they will always stay at that AMI because it stays with the developer? Because it moves with the unit?
If they meet the requirements of the RFP. So in this case, our RFP is saying maintaining existing housing for older adults. So you would have to meet those base requirements to acquire.
Okay.
And there's actually a pretty hefty list of, of just general requirements, not necessarily the evaluation, that most developers wouldn't do unless they were specific affordable housing developers. So I couldn't imagine somebody trying to go for project-based vouchers to, to help, well, they couldn't for their discretionary housing requirement.
Okay.
Anyway.
Which is pretty specific to that. You don't really see market rates going for.
Vouchers.
Any needs.
It's compliance world, I'm not really.
So you have any more discussion on that? It's a very interesting subject, though.
It's, it's complex. And this is, this is just the, the FYI that we are following the procedure in our admin plan of doing this. It will come to you for final consideration of what project gets awarded, so that'll come back to you.
So we are now at the Hoverland Development Community Service Partners.
So Dallas is going to share, I think you're here. You sharing, Owen? So, uh, the Hoverland, so this is that, um, pair of parcels that are adjacent to Hearthstone and Lodge, right here on this side. Um, this is land owned by LHDC, which we've talked about, we're gonna use the ARPA funds to allow LHA to purchase it from LHDC. They pay back the city from their loan, it's like keep the money in, that's a whole financing thing. But really, what we've done is in December, we selected a development partner. Um, and they have started in full force putting together concept plans for what we could do with the site. So the several things that we told them we were interested in pursuing are, um, prefab homes, if possible. At least exploring it to the point where we try and decide if it's feasible financially and amongst other factors or not.
So let me jump, let me jump in on that. So when we went to, to visit, um, Innewell, we put that in the RFP. We're not moving away from it, we're still looking at it, but it, that product is posing some interesting issues in the tax credit side. Because the lenders don't know how to quite deal with it. And, and on the other side of it, they need all the money upfront. So while it may be cheaper to actually construct the unit, it may be more expensive based on the interest and everything else that's going into it versus in the traditional construction process, when you go in and you pay them, you're paying bills as they're coming in. And she has to front a ton of money into it. So we're trying to understand that piece. Uh, we're still looking at it, our nurse, we're looking at it, but it's a, it's a unique twist on the money side.
Well, yeah, the part of the governor's day clause was, was prefab as well, so. Just whether that ties in or not.
It's maybe fifty dollars in the bank?
I think it could. I think the, in my help, the, the issue is really on the fabrication side and how, how are their models set up? Because if they're requiring you to come in and fund forty percent of it upfront, in a normal construction, you're, you know, they're funding that cost and then you're paying bills every thirty days. It's expensive, but you're not coming in forty percent of the dollars upfront. And that's what we're trying to understand their models a little bit. The other side of it is, um, you have to have the right contractor. And, and we, in the RFP, they do bring contractors in, they're familiar with this. Because if you don't get a contractor that's familiar with it, we heard a lot of horror stories in town. You go south and it goes south in that way, so.
So two add-ons on the contracting side, you see it a lot in, in the mountain communities and much smaller developments. And that's because there's a price premium to, to the seasonal construction nature. And that's why that price premium is, can be absorbed. But here on the Front Range, it's not as common because, uh, the price premium is not, is, they don't need to, to shorten the construction time, timeframe. So drastically to be able to do it. So that's one thing that we've learned. And then secondly, on the financing side, it's, it's lenders, um, but it's also CHAFA. They, if you're seeing, if they see you with a prefab model, they're like, well, we're not gonna order, we're, we're not going to allocate tax credits unless we know that you have the funding to come up with that upfront fund. So it's like a chicken and egg.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but somebody's gotta figure it out. And we, we told this developer, if it can be figured out for the Front Range, we wanna be the ones to do it. But we're also not gonna risk the project horribly to do something that doesn't make sense. So we're still in that exploration phase, but, uh, what you do see here does reflect that hope. Um, so what we have is a set of townhome product, prefab townhome products here with top ender parking. This was twenty-eight units, if I recall, of three bedrooms. Um, so that's, we're trying to also, because it is a huge site, uh, that would help make a more diverse neighborhood and have some placemaking and just have a mix of products. So if anybody on the Front Range can do it, we wanna do it. Again, good copy, nice. And then we have a more traditional multifamily that would be primarily one and two-bedroom units. Um, and with those one-bedrooms, we were really talking about, it's a family-centric idea for this property. So, um, making the one-bedroom kind of plus where if there's a parent that has, you know, a child part-time, that there is a proper space. We're trying to think of all those types of things here because, um, a one-bedroom in a family property doesn't seem like it makes sense. But on the finance side, they almost need those one-bedrooms to make it pan out. So this is just a concept, I mean, you see like what looks like a pool here, this is all to be, that's a, that's like a playground space or something in the middle and some surface parking and then some top ender parking as well. Um, that's the basic bird's eye view, but what we really wanted, and this is all concept and still being explored. But what we really wanted to go over tonight with you is the potential for community services that we could put into this multifamily building. So if you mind going down, there might be one or two screens. That's just an overhead of what, that's the same thing you see. Down one more. Again. Again.
It doesn't look like.
We're basically showing, showing stuff. We're going into, we see that, is that all that? Maybe there are a few that's been showing up fully. So if you go up, try and go up to the top version of, of this one. Let's see if we can get a first floor. Oh, that was it, there we are. Oh, it was on here, I'm sorry. This is so light, it's hard to tell. So we have an opportunity here. So this is the first floor of that building where we still have units here on this side. And then we have an opportunity for some sort of community service space. And typically in a residential, multi-unit residential, this would be amenities, would be a community room, et cetera. Um, what we're hoping to accomplish with this, um, family-centric property is, um, bringing in some more unique community services. So we've been working with the community services divisions, um, which are now Recreation Cultural Library, um, and Golfers Group, Children, Youth and Families, et cetera, to see what we could do in here. Um, we, if this was in a qualified census tract, which is our, our more concentrated low-income census tracts, then we would have the opportunity most likely to include community services in what's called BASIS, meaning the tax credits would fund it. This is not in a qualified census tract, even if we do have populations in this area that are, that could use these services. Um, and so we couldn't necessarily get all of the community services covered in that BASIS. Maybe some, we're trying to work that and be creative. But basically, we have about eight thousand square feet to work with. And the top three, um, items that have really come out as agreed upon, but with all of our community services divisions, is a, um, like a storefront library in somewhat of a retail space, but a, a library satellite. Either like a branch or maybe just a, a smaller, you know, drop-in with computers and library vending machines. We're talking about all of the options there. And then potentially an early childcare center that conserve the units above and then take overflow for elsewhere. Um, and then one other request is, from all of the divisions, was flex space to be able to do community programming in different ways.
And that got modified today, so.
I wasn't in that one either.
So, part of it is, when they were, when they were looking at flex space, so when I was working this weekend, I, I was thinking about what we have at, um, Lashley Street Station, what we have at Isaac Walton, and how we're programming it. And so I talked to Joni and Jeff today and I asked Jeff, I go, how often are we programming these other spaces? And Jeff's like, yeah, I'm finding we're not. And I said, so if we're not programming, shouldn't we program these other spaces to a hundred percent before we look at more flex space? And Jeff was like, yeah, I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to look at early childhood and the library and see if we'll see that with the, the thing that would occur today. Uh, when we talk about early childhood, BASIS is really important because we know from the library standpoint that because it's not in a QCT, we can't use BASIS on that. So if we were to do that, we would have to find that a way to fund that piece of it via city dollars. Not included in that, because it's not included in BASIS. If we were in a QCT, completely different conversation. Early childhood, we're starting to try to figure out is if it could early childhood in this. And if the priority for the early childhood care is for the residents, can that be included in BASIS? Um, because if, if the servant, if it's directed to the people that live there, you can include it. We don't know if we can make that argument, but we're gonna try to make that argument to say something to the effect of it's early childhood space for the residents. If they don't fill all their spots, then they can open it up to the community. And our goal is to get that into BASIS, but we could strike out and not get it, but. So we're starting to talk to the early childhood providers. Uh, I know we've talked to Head Start as well, because I know they need some space and we're getting some space requirements for them. Part of why we, the other reason I didn't, I, I personally wasn't really keen on the flex space, is we wanna activate that space. And if you have flex space, you won't necessarily keep it activated all the time. And I think that goes to safety and other things, you know, people get out there. And so, um, I think the answer now is trying to get the library and early childhood.
I have a question there. Oh, which I think is a great idea. Um, would that be third-party operated in that? Oh, great.
It'd be like a, like a retail condominium, uh, setup where, yeah.
I did, because I think Girlhouse has too much to do to.
It's them.
Vision there.
I had a heart attack probably when my kids were there.
So what, what this is showing right now is the max request for that satellite library, if it was the big version and not a smaller version. This is the five thousand square foot set aside for the library. And then this is a three thousand square foot that right now is showing flex. Um, but we could talk about how to manage early childhood in that or split it in a different way.
And we could try in the library, put some meeting space in there. And if you get the meeting space for the residents, then maybe you can get some of that into BASIS, but we've got a lot of work to do.
And funding will have to come up with it. We know that in some level, you would have to figure that out. But we wanted to, um, get your feedback tonight on moving further down that direction, if we're gonna go in the right way.
So would that also be possible for, say, Net Cafe or, um, say, communal, communal workspace for the residents that live? Because that's, I think, the caveat for all of this is it's the residents.
It's like a, almost like a business center, uh, lab specifically for those residents?
So you could be very creative with it.
Right, kids can do, do remote learning or anything like that. And we can get, we're, we're trying to stretch our legs as far as we can financially.
Part of it is, we're gonna have to work with, um, our LHA head off, city manager head off. We're gonna have to work with these, these groups that provide these services to be creative. Because if you did a co-working space, computer lab, that was available for the residents and so you have resident services there that were jointly used with the library, we're gonna have to think different models to do this.
Well, it seems like a very tight rope.
Yep.
So the, oh.
Oh, is, is this library different, a different branch library than the one we're talking about?
Smaller?
Smaller, yes, but in addition to.
Yes. Think of it, so libraries are using a lot of storefronts and commercial areas where you can do pickup, small computer labs, things like that. It's not a library in the traditional sense.
So we might have some, you know, children's books wherever we have, yeah.
We've got to work on that, because the BASIS question is.
It could be an order type system where you, where they're looking to break the BASIS.
We already have that, but we're not going to. So we didn't.
I mean, and it's a complicated equation, because when we think about this, one piece of it's a capital for this, this is the arm building. And that's always the hardest for us to figure out. But Jeff's aware of this and as they're refining the numbers for the cultural and recreation nation tax, we still have time to make a list of that in, which could be a. The problem is, this would try to shoot for August.
August tax credits.
August tax credits, which.
They will also wanna know what funding commitments we have lined up.
Right. Right.
The last, I forgot to mention the total number of units here. So, what this is showing currently in this model is fifty-three one, two, and three-bedroom units in the building, and then twenty-six townhouses, so seventy-nine units overall, which we could max, I mean, we've seen there, the process is to show the maximum yield of units on the site, and then work your way down to something that actually works. The maximum yield on this site was like a hundred and seventy-four units, and it was massive. And this is trying to back into what is most successful in the Lytech application. Like, that's too big to be successful at one time, so that's a worry.
Well, we may have to go into two separate applications. Which would, if we, if we think about it strategically, they build a town hall first, they go second, but they give us some time to figure out.
And we're looking at other grants as well, so some of the little towns.
And then Christina found some grants for the library, the early childhood, that are pretty unique in the state, that they grant that.
So, when you're talking about the, I want to call it, prefab, we, I think you all, with the money upfront, is there clawback provisions if they do not?
Yeah, I mean, and there's, what we're finding is actually, you're one in Eden are now showing some.
Okay.
There's some in Utah that are, that they're looking at, Utah.
Yes, I'm liking, I'm sure, but they have a manufacturing facility in Nebraska.
So, they're looking at all.
Idaho is the.
Idaho, you're right.
That's still, there's a lot of detail there to be worked out, too. We haven't fully delved into what that would actually look like coming from the prefab, whether.
But if going to park cities and park city unit or something, like they mentioned, we're going to talk about.
It's certainly the head of a company.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to mention that because, you know, we did want to maximize density as much as we could, but we also need to be realistic on what we could get funded. And when it comes to those three bedrooms, I mean, we don't want to have too many three-bedroom apartments just to serve what the market would be able to fill. And the townhouses for those three bedrooms are, make a lot of sense, so.
So, that gives a question for you all, in terms of that space. Do you all agree that we should look at library and early childhood, or should we look at?
Yeah, I think we do.
I think your argument toward not doing the other FlexSpaces is that, to Jeff's point, we have, I would not use it, coming up to a hundred percent to begin with, so probably stay out of another Flex. And some of this space might be Flex in a sense that, at some point in the day or evening, it might not be used, and could be used in the event that it needs to.
Is that it?
Yeah, okay, moving. So, the idea is we'll, we're having some, we're gonna have enough of a concept design and financial model to put in for the grant application in March, and I mean, we're still figuring out which tax credit or what makes the most sense, but certainly have enough bodies ready to make some decisions.
So, Lonnie, on your very first slide, I thought that it's like two, right there, two places we're going. Is that correct?
It's just looking at it from a north-south orientation, yeah. But it is two parcels.
I see it now, yeah.
So, that's one and that's the other. So, this is, that's facing north, so there's Hearthstone Lodge.
We're gonna kind of get into just to give you some sense of some detail. Like, because of where Hearthstone Lodge is placed, I asked them, "Well, can we rotate that one building?" Still looks the same way, and then they said, "No, you don't want your parking lot facing, you want the parking lot facing where it's commercial." And so, we're giving it a pretty nitty-gritty stuff. Also on this, this is the one where we're really talking to LPC in terms of solar heat pumps and different components on this, even the point of where do you find battery storage? Because we're trying to maximize density, and so we had a good conversation about potentially utilizing some of the over property for battery storage. And so, a lot of that, we're pretty adept in an algorithm issue. I will say the one thing that we did say in terms of looking at, site-wise, site-wide geothermal or some version of that is, we're gonna want whatever we use to be a closed system. Meaning that we don't want air circulating from one unit into the broader properties, because we all know the issues you get into. So, one of the limiting factors in that is going to be, whatever we do has to be a closed system where the air stays within the individual apartment units, or we're gonna have a bigger problem for ourselves.
So, to that point, when, as long as I were on the meeting privately, I asked and replied, "Why can't we give rebates, and probably not tax credits, but rebates to developers to put in heat pumps or alternative heating systems, instead of putting it on the backs of the residents? Because of the new development, if the developer could buy involved heat pumps or whatever, and get a rebate on those, so they go here to the policy division."
And we did explain to you earlier that, how can we base on location versus residential shit, what was that reason?
Well, so this is, this is Cook Court here. This is eight, I'm sorry, this is eighteen. So, having eighteen be the main connector to Hobart was good for the library and the early childcare, because people would be coming that way. And then on Cook Court is more of a street, and you want it to look like a streetscape with the townhouse doors and stoops that, that help neighbor-to-neighbor interactions, and really all the ugly stuff where the cars are coming in and pulling into the parking lot, keep that facing the back of Walgreens, basically.
The other thing.
And that's a private, that's just a private driveway, basically, not a road.
Well, we're in that HO, right, so, because we're in HO later, too, by the way.
We are. Yeah, we talked about how we're still in HO, so.
The other thing is on-street parking, to maximize on-street parking for the library or the childhood versus having to park in rather than a parking lot, because that's just a lot of money for a space that you don't get right then and there. But this is like ten designs down, and you're probably gonna be in under fifteen.
I mean, we're not gonna have a pool. This is actually not a pool, it's a school, it's supposed to be like a, I was like, well, do like a splash pad if you're gonna do that, but generally, families-focused outdoor space. And then the other thing is, if we do an early childcare center, are they able to use that? Or is that too, crossing the parking lot with little kids, so how do we fit that in? There's a lot of working pieces, so.
Okay. So, we are at the Commissioner comments to.
I think we're, yeah.
But Commissioner comments is.
That's what it is.
Oh, where's the inner?
It's next.
Oh, oh, okay, never mind, go ahead.
Well, I think that we have a comment, so we're gonna skip six and go right to, and then.
Sorry, I just wanted to, before we go. A few things I want to talk about, first is, you know, we've talked about meth fairly extensively in these meetings and what we need to do. We have contacted the company out of New Zealand, and we've had several meetings with them. We are entering into a, we are approaching entering into, or actually, we've agreed in terms of this, a test project where we get fifty meth detectors in, and start testing to see how they work, based on the information we're getting, and we have the news stories from Australia and other places. They're expanding, they just now received their FCC approvals to operate in the United States. They're talking to various, I think predominantly, hotels right now. They are talking to a couple of thousand authorities, we're on the front end of that, and so we're going to look at purchasing fifty of those, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars. We're trying to work through some technical pieces on that right now. Sarah's taking that, working the gallery, because they communicate via cellular technology, and it's from New Zealand. So, we're having to figure out how we handle the scent parts of this. Once we can figure that out, we will purchase the scent parts here, we have to send them to New Zealand to be installed, because the meth detectors are tamper-proof, and so you can't install them here. And then, we're gonna work with them in terms of setting the levels that it gets in terms of meth. It was evaluated by the shopping station laboratory group, it will pick back up to one part of the room. They're finding results where it will pick it up if you smoke it outside and walk by it. So, when you look at the cost of remediation and what we're having to do, it's a big difference. And so, we're gonna bring it in, we're talking to them about a three-month test, evaluate it, maybe go another three months. And I know this is something you all have been pushing us to do, and. Right. And so, we're gonna, once we can figure out the tech piece on this, we're gonna.
She's like.
Don't worry about it. He said twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, part of what I'm also thinking about doing is, is maybe holding ten of those units and putting them in, based on what we've seen recently, public facilities in Australia. They will communicate with us via app, so if somebody tries to tackle it, they'll tell us. It'll communicate the levels to us, and basically, we're just trying to stop, hey, what's the? Well, there's two things, A, we don't want to lose our insurance, because the insurance piece is probably concerning more than anything right now with the number of claims that we've been making due to that and managing costs. But at the end of the day, it's about the health, safety, welfare of all the residents that are living in these facilities, and making sure that they're safe.
And we could equip every single one of our units, and at the retail rate, not the negotiated rate, and it would still be equivalent to one reconstructed unit.
And people know. That they're.
That's the hope, kind of preventative measure, hopefully.
I think you would have a lot of vacancies.
You know, so, yeah, we're gonna be very overt, we're gonna have an addendum to the crime-free multi-family housing piece on lease. We're gonna be upfront with folks, where we're gonna put them in initially, or units that we have. Because, you know, we may test some here or there, because it'll even pick it up late, and the way they're talking, like, two months after. So, we're gonna be working with public safety, I don't know, Sarah, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I was, well, a little bit, so, you know, looking into this a little bit more, talking to Michelle Bowman, our assistant chief, our marshal, and she, she thinks, they just, in layman's terms, they could operate in that CO2 unit. And the alarm does not go off to, it's a silent alarm, basically, and it works us.
Correct.
And, you know, talking, we really need to be specific on placement of these, if we're going to outside of units, and what levels we want to keep them at, because if you keep it at a very low or very high, you know, you're gonna get all these different variables of what outcomes are we looking for, so.
I can't see. So, my question is, can you contrast this, which is like, again, like a CO2 detector, or CO detector, or whatever, versus the testing that you do after a building is vacated, how does that look? In terms of speed and human effort to get it done, and all of that. And the reason I'm asking is because public are asking, you know, all these other libraries are testing, and they're signed in that, but you're not testing our library that's up here.
Different question, I think there were cause in the other library systems, it's right now informed, which is just can't be broken.
So, any other was caused in Hobart? I don't know about you.
I think there's cause.
There was, I heard of the CPR, CPR, they did a whole segment on there, and there was cause. They don't have cause.
And so, so a different question. What I would say from my standpoint is, the sooner you catch it, the lower the cost.
Sure, of course.
That's, that's, obviously prevention, but lower the cost. It's a clean versus one unit right now, but are they still trying to figure out what to take out of it?
No, that one is, well, we have the one at Aspernose Neighborhood that has a board on the front door. And we had to even take off the front door, all the window seals, everything, and it's down to nothing.
Down to rafters and studs.
Did they have to replace studs, too? We were afraid we were going to, I guess, we had to grind a garage for one unit to get the concrete clear.
And Marshall, to answer your question a little bit more clear on the front end, how, how a lot of times our communities find out is traffic, and in the crime-free border, you get to see call service, and so, say you have, you know, a lot of these times, people have people in and out all the time today, all the time at night, neighbors start to notice that, it takes a lot longer for things to pop up versus the detector telling us, "Hey, this person, you know, whether he's inside or outside," it's going to be a faster way to find out if people are losing versus taking the time, okay, you know, Lisa, here's that we might, we either have someone that police have seen activity, we repair familiar, or we make arrests, et cetera. And then we go down the posting of notice, or we have to post a notice, and it kind of goes over that matrix, because we could have just a guest versus a leaseholder, and so, it's a little bit of a volume. It's going to speed up the process.
Yeah, I'm just, just more asking what's the process like, how, so if you have established problems, how should go in there? Like, spray, take paint scrapings and take it to your lab, or what's it like?
So, if we have cause, then we just start observing the notice, like, if they told the police, and we get in our call service, that they were smoking meth, we've had that happen where people commit to the police, they've done meth, so then we start the notice in the ten day, and then we have to go through the whole court process before we can get in there and test the unit.
Yes, and I, I understand that there's, that there's a legal process, I'm asking about a clinical process. So, you've got these fancy detectors, how do the old detectors do? There's no, there's no.
Sort of my genesis goes in from, we cycle is the most common company that, I mean, properties are long on these. They go in, test it, they send it to the state, state then.
The test.
The test.
What does the test do?
Basically, you test different areas on the wall, and then you have to send it to a certified lab.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to ask, you take paint scrapings or material scrapings?
You do a chemical swab, and they do about forty, fifty swabs.
That's what I was asking.
And you would still have to go through the process. So, that doesn't, well, even if this went off, you would still have to go through that process under state law, because that is what creates.
Sure, but if it goes off, then you know that you can stop the detonation process, and if it didn't go off, you know you don't.
And let me be clear, this is civil. Everything we're talking about is civil. It has, has nothing to do with, this is as plain as we're.
Exactly. So, Commissioner, a quick.
Sarah, what I was thinking about, and when you were talking about this, and you had started to touch on it very in there with what Commissioner Martin was asking, was the issue around somebody who comes in that, you said these things are pretty. You said these things are pretty sensitive, being able to pick up. So, individual A out here isn't part of the unit, smokes it. Individual B walks through the cloud or whatever. Comes and visits individual C who owns the... Or is renting the apartment. And all of a sudden, it goes off. Neither one of B or C have smoked meth. Do we have camera systems in there showing, you know, who's coming in where and on the outside? Because, you know, we wouldn't want to start accusing people.
Right. And you just, I mean, exactly. So, we'll use the suites as an example. The camera system inside the hallway is good, right? So, to be able to say, oh, well, someone came in at this time. I mean, there's going to be a lot more, I mean, those little things that we need to really talk about are going to have to be like, we're gonna have to have, have to have an operating process for that, right?
Yeah, as Tim reiterated, we need a policy, so...
I would think so because you're starting to step into people's personal lives and behind closed doors and that type of stuff.
Yeah, so, we did have a conversation with Tim and another under Fair Housing. And so, we need a process in that. We have asked to... And they have... New Zealand and Australia aren't that different from how we operate. And so, we asked for the processes that they have and to set up a meeting with owners and people on this list so that we can really get that set. Obviously, we won't do anything until we have all of that. We just wanna go up the network, in the process of finalizing it. And it's interesting. We know that the other one that they're talking to is in Denver. And every other person that is touching down there right now is that let us know how this works. Because we're all at a crisis point. We're fortunate we still have insurance. If we lose insurance, and we have to do two of these, we could be bankrupt probably.
Yeah.
It's gonna be out of our reserves.
It's about a hundred thousand dollars. We have a hundred thousand dollar cap on our insurance. So, if that goes up, that's out of our pocket. And it has a five thousand dollar penalty. But the last one to be seen for demolition is our cost. So, pictures are most important, like the cost. Their litigation process is the most...
So, the good news is there is some technology out there that is making it help us. Another thing I wanted to talk to you all about is really the two buildings that we own. So, we have talked with the board about the CPWP building and selling that building to the Center for People with Disabilities. They're leasing that now. They were interested in purchasing it. And that's the building adjacent to Village Place. We did extend the contract for three months. And we're now going to engage in conversations to sell that building to them. That is pretty important for our cash flows and we're looking at certain issues. Early on, we also have talked about what are we gonna do to the office building? The LHA UCBN for the Briarwood Apartments. I have reached out to VCP. They're leasing if I was there to see if they're interested in buying it. I think that makes a lot of sense because they can utilize three units in similar fashion. They have indicated that they want to begin conversations on that. And again, I think the cash flows make a lot of sense. At Briarwood, we're talking to units. We're bringing online in the next two to three years. And it's two-hundred-and-twenty-one units. And so, we need to start that conversation for planning. But I wanted to make sure you all do what you were doing it and to see if you all agree with us thinking of that approach. And then, we're still working. So, on the other side of it, on the housing authority side, we also do LHTC work. It's primarily audits now. We are still working on transferring the LHTC over to the housing authority. Chrisman Walk Two was a model. But we're... Can we do Chrisman One or not?
Yes. Chrisman One, Spring Creek, and Fall River are the next ones up because they're the least heavily lived. And Village Place is gonna happen automatically with this application.
Right. So, then we're really left with Harson and Lodge. And that's the one that's a HUD 202 property, which is a little more complicated than the project I'm talking about. The good news is the... The LHTC board is willing to aim on with this, through this. And so, the imminent legal stock has changed. And so, that's good news. So, we're really looking at this and actually getting excited about some of the projects and trying to figure out how can they participate in that. That's all I have. Sarah, do you have any safety issues?
No. I mean, the scene doesn't question us by any specific.
Oh, snow. Yeah, forgiven. So, as Sarah was closing the year out, we realized that we paid two-hundred... Almost two-hundred thousand dollars in snow moving for the LHA properties. We started... I said, what are we doing? We have begun conversations with cash on the city side to see what it would take to purchase at least one truck in one of the little... You see our orgos that we have with their cover? And so, we're working through those numbers now because it appears that we can at least, we can get, what do we say? Two trucks and one of those and a trailer and a machine. And these are the ones we would actually buy from the city. Would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand, I think. We're still working on those numbers. Is that what it was, Peter? One-fifty with cash is not true?
I came into the conversation late.
Oh, sorry.
So, I don't know what the decision was as far as the...
So, we think it's about, we think it's about a hundred and fifty thousand, which on a one-time cost per year basis, we've gotta figure out how we're gonna handle it in budget. But when you look at the ongoing cost, that really applies to the units. It will be significantly lower on going basis. And so, and then our maintenance staff will be doing that, which what we're finding is they're having to go out and do some of it now because just snow contractors or... So, we may very well come back within a month to be along with some budget adjustments that we're gonna need to acquire this equipment. We will probably have to have an agreement. So, you know how I draw hard lines on this? Jim will be the one on the city side that'll be working it, will be working it over here. But we may have to work some arrangement on what we're doing over time so that it doesn't tax us financially and what feels smooth. But we think that's the best way to do it. We actually think we'll get quicker snow over on the properties and then save ourselves a lot of money on it.
Do you have a contract with the snowing company?
Yes. Thirty-day notice. So, and, you know, the last few storms, even my HLA was sending out notices going. We're not sure the snow's gonna be removed because they're just worn out. Just because of the amount of snow laws we've had and a lot of shit. And so, yeah, we're working through all that. I just wanted to give you a heads up. Because if we do it, we're gonna wanna do it sooner rather than later so we don't keep paying bills. And how about in January?
We're at thirty-one last month. And we didn't even get those last two. I'm... And I was so... How many snow events were behind that? So, did you see there were two? Snow though?
And one of the trailer. But we'll work with cash on the numbers and what he's looking at. And he's the expert. We've worked with Jim on that. It's definitely something we can't continue doing this. There's a billion dash.
Just that, if the numbers... Okay. So, okay, we're done there. Can I motion to adjourn?
I think we've got update operations, just the...
The occupancy?
So...
We did end the year at a ninety-three percent occupancy, which had a lot to do with audits, inspections, holidays, weather. Everything was hard to fill units those last two months of the year due to a number of issues. But my team is coming back strong. We've already had quite a few move-ins already this year. Our highest number of vacancies is obviously this week. We're sitting at fourteen right now. This reflects thirteen, but we are up to fourteen vacancies.
How many of those are MHP?
The thirteen showing on here, seven were MHP, six were LHA. And LHA, I think, has four working right now to be in in the next couple of weeks.
And are those ready for occupancy? The empty ones or are they...
They're all different stages. Some are. We've had two of the down units previously reported, seven-one-one-zero, which was a meth unit at the suite. So, that one's already occupied. And then seven-one-one-four, which was another meth unit and was showing on here in process of reconstruction. That one actually has a move-in schedule next week. So, these units are coming back online pretty quickly now and being occupied.
What are your waitlists?
Right now, we have three waitlists open and we are... It's working through the old waitlist still on the other properties. And once those are extinguished, we're gonna just keep the waitlist open, I think, year-round now so that they don't go stagnant and that we always have good names. Because what we're finding is when one person applies to one waitlist, they're applying to every waitlist open. So, we may have fifty people on every waitlist, but twenty of those names are all duplicates. So, if they move into one property, we just lost twenty names. And we're still calling them, you know, hey, are you looking to move in? Not knowing that they move in. So, we've also, what we're moving to is a new process for the waitlist where the admin assistant is going to manage the waitlist. So, she'll be able to see, oh, this person moved in and take them off of all the other waitlist. So, one person going forward will be managing all those waitlists for us.
And so, you know where we're having the biggest problems in our age restricted problems?
It's been difficult filling. People are now moving in with their kids, so... We're hoping moving closer to spring that will have more people wanting to be on their own again and be able to still... Because they're not constrained with... Nobody wants to move in this weather. And that's one thing we're hearing. I'm not moving. I'm not moving right now. We don't want to look at all those.
You'd be able to remove the snow.
Without counting the suites right now, my properties are sitting. I think we ended this month at a ninety-five or ninety-six percent occupied when you take the suites out, so...
The suites waiting list is managed by the HCB staff. They have some place to watch it because all of those are project rooms. And we're going through it really quick because, you know, the majority of the people that are on the list are homeless. So, you might have to send out thirty letters to get one person to apply. So...
And HCB is running into the same difficulties. They said they can send out twenty letters and not even get a response for a unit.
So, we're planning on, we're planning on opening up the waiting list in every six months. So, it's gonna get rid of it and then opening it up. So, do you let the hour sitter and know about...
Yes. We have a mass list against, you know, all resource centers here in Longmont. Every case, many case managers are on that list for agencies and against public sites as well.
One more thing. Tracy made you a point. When you talk about permanent supportive, when we're talking about empty housing issues. The suites and ZD, I think you would get both of them being permanent supportive. There's a strong connection of that empty housing, empty housing issues. So, when we talk about we're bringing fifty-five units on to Virginia, that's what, you know, there's new units there for the empty housing. We have to work through that process. And one of the things we've talked about is working with folks about being housing ready. It's a different conversation because regarding, there's different thresholds and the five-minute times are highs. And we end up getting into some pretty bad situations than having a good picture. And so, those are things that are on our mind, trying to figure out how you really can someone's ready to move in or... And that's not me. Everybody that's in permanent supportive is saying the same thing.
And we're going to the, just the property updates. Not a lot for December, but the VHS shuttle transportation is increasing. We see numbers double at Spring Creek, Aspen, and Village Place. Those residents, now that they've seen a few go, the numbers are up to nine, ten residents per trip. LHA did some year-end bingo bashes at all the properties, which was a big hit. We solicited all the LDVA properties, asking for donations, gift cards, stuff like that. And went to each property and did a two-hour bingo session with prizes, and they just loved it. So, it was a great way to end the year with the residents. We have a four percent rental rate increase for the communities. And the feedback from the residents was actually not bad. They, Carol went out and explained it to them all and why we needed to do it. And I feel very little upset, so... Suites, our calls for service from public safety is remaining low. And we've had quite a few days with no calls recently. So, for the last month, I think we've had like three, four days' sense with no calls, so... So, not that we're... The suites, we also have hired one of our three building attendants. So, our weeknight building attendant did start two weeks ago. This is his third week and he controls seven-thirty to five-thirty in the morning. And so, he takes over all the lockout calls, walks the grounds multiple times a night. He's helping maintenance with cleaning units, painting, whatever he can do, cleaning the common area. So, it's a win-win. And this is what replaced the security company that used to be there. And I'm making a second offer tomorrow for our... Two meth units and one biohazard. And then we have a leak unit. So, that was on the down units that we're working through insurance claims on to get those units back online within the next thirty to sixty days.
What would constitute a fire hazard?
That's experience that one. Where's... Yeah. Let's just say they need...
It gets, it gets pretty personal.
Yeah. Yeah, they had to cut out two feet of drywall.
Bio.
Threw out the whole unit to feed a drywall.
One of the situations where assistance would be...
Aspen Meadows, we're still working on the flooring unit from the remodel and re-syndication. We're working on our next steps with that. Neighborhood, we did have a great CHAPA inspection. They came out, did a CHAPA, inspected ten units. They were really pleased with the turnaround of the property and where everything looked. They also inspected Aspen Senior, which we were not expecting, but had very little comments and was pleased with how management was handling everything, how the units looked inside, the files looked. So, great turnaround from CHAPA. Hush on that. And then, our Village Place re-syndication, we're really kicking it off. We met with the architect and the residents on Monday. Got a lot of great feedback from residents for what they wanna see with this re-syndication.
It was a listening session, it was an intake rather than what else was gonna happen. So, this architect is really good at working with the residents.
Spring Creek and Fall River, we do have a vacant manager position. So, Corinne, who does the Aspens and the suites, is temporarily taking over Spring Creek. And then Andre, who does the Harson and Lodge, is temporarily taking over Fall River. I am making an offer for a manager tomorrow for that property. So, we will have that vacancy hopefully filled here in the next two weeks. Harson and Lodge both had their MOR audits. And has MOR, it's...
It's a HUD audit related to their multifamily program, trial review.
That was the one that I told you where they fell miserably.
Right.
And then we did really well.
Yes, we got the official results in December. And then the Lodge, the bed bug issue is no more. So, that's been taken care of. LHA in December, in a nutshell. Any questions on anything going on in the properties?
So, is there management?
Thank you. How many audits we have and what all the acronyms are?
Two audits almost a month, right? Two to three audits a month in inspections. We had one on Monday, one last week, two the week before. For all these units.
Some of the units have five different sources of funding. You know, they might have home and housing tax credits and housing voucher grants and vouchers.
Yeah, so, and then management on top of it enters the unit to do our annual inspections, which will be twice a year going forward. So, yeah, these units...
Get inspected?
Yes.
Do they have that many external inspections every month? Or this is like because it's?
It's currently standard because of the type of housing we have. So, you gotta think each investor wants to come and look at their asset. And anybody who put money into the property wants to come and look at the asset to make sure you're maintaining it. So, yeah, some of these units, properties can have five, six inspections a, a year. And then we have nine properties.
Well, I do have a question, um, you know, with the meth units, counting the ones that are down and then the length of days, um, vacant. Do you find that this time's going out, is, is it going up, the number that you're noticing of?
The turnaround time is actually going down now. Uh, we've been able to have our adjuster work with some construction companies where we are now, once we get the clearance from the county that the unit is decontaminated, we are scheduling our adjuster to walk with the construction companies so that they're communicating at the same time instead of doing that back and forth, which used to happen. I found out that that's screen lining the process for us.
Moving the turnaround time.
Yes, as soon as I get the bid, I send it back to the adjuster. He's like, I've already talked to him, I'm okay with this, go ahead, sign it and it'll work done.
Okay.
So, instead of the adjuster and the contractor having to go back and forth for, uh, two to, two weeks to six weeks of, you know, pricing.
Cause I was looking at, you know, two hundred and twenty-nine, two hundred and forty-nine days.
Yeah.
Is that typical?
So, yeah, so like one fourteen, that was, um, one of the ones that had to be taken down to the studs. And then that was with the supply chain issues, um, not being able to get stuff in.
Sure.
And three oh five, that, that was a lot of, that was, because that unit was part of the re-syndication at Aspen Meadows and the flooring issues that we were trying to work through with the adjuster and had to go about fixing that unit.
Okay.
But Fall River's down, um, around a hundred and twenty-one days with the adjuster and the contractor. I've already come to a agreement, so now we're just waiting for them to get in there, start the work.
So, then that one hundred number is about more average.
So, I'm hoping to keep it right around. We want to see it down to a hundred and eighty days now, so.
Uh, and then are you finding that, you know, are you coming across more units that are being contaminated with meth? Or is it just kind of the same?
It's about the same.
It's about, if it is, it's because we're just paying more attention.
Okay, well, that, that's a good thing.
We don't think that, we, we can't tell if use is going up, but we don't ignore it when we get, and now we, we know what science is still for. So, I would say it's more related to our attention.
We went into one eviction that was, one of the bad ones, which is, uh, never assumed that there's gonna be an issue. And then they bowled it.
Okay.
And so, I don't think our numbers are, I mean, when you talk to everybody that's in the world, it's just a national crisis.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know her any further. I do think we are paying probably closer attention than.
Talking about it.
Than, than most landlords. And, um, you know, it's a, it's an interesting world. And I'll answer your question later. What is bio?
Oh, no, that's all right. That's okay, I kinda, I did some inferencing. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I would please her.
Pete, are you okay with returning?
Yeah, I can't see anybody, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyone? I'm ready.